Well, first let me say good evening to everyone. And to introduce myself, I'm Mayor Carl Brewer. And I want to welcome everyone tonight to the Town Hall Meeting on Underage Drinking. And this event is being sponsored by the City of Wichita, the Mayor's Youth Council, Mayor's Inc., Mirror's Inc., and Entercom. I want to thank the Mayor's Youth Council for its decision to address that serious issue of underage drinking. It is often said that our youth are our most important resource, and that's true. This Town Hall Meeting shows our commitment to helping youth keep on the right path while avoiding decisions and behaviors that could derail them or change their lives. Underage drinking kills thousands of youth every year in this country, and it negatively affects many more lives. This is a problem we can prevent. If we work together, raise awareness, and encourage our young people to make smart Here to help us talk more about this particular issue of Wichita's more recognizable voice is Greg "The Hitman" Williams. Greg?
You know, I'm so used to introducing the mayor, I'm honored to have him introduce me tonight. This is great to be here. First of all, I want to say good evening, and Mayor Brewer, Vice Mayor Miller, Councilwoman Williams, Jason Verbekmos with Mirror Incorporated, and of course, our Mayor's Youth Council, and most importantly, the fine citizens of our great city. I say thank you, because I'm honored to be here tonight. The City Manager's Office contacted me, I guess it was a little less than 24 hours ago, and they say, "Here's what we've got going on." I said, "This is important, you've got to get to the radio station, we're putting you on the air, and we've got to have a conversation about this." Most importantly, what I love about tonight is that we are witnessing leadership, and I love that. We're witnessing vision, we're witnessing action about something that is real in our community, and that is underage drinking. Now, make no mistake, the problem of underage drinking is real, here in Wichita and across the nation. And sadly, within the last 24 hours, we've received the news of an 18-year-old high school student who was found dead after going to a party, falling over a six-foot embankment and landing headfirst. Then, she walked a quarter of a mile, passed out, and died from hypothermia. This young lady did not have to die. Our details are still pending, but unfortunately, she has become a statistic like many others before her. And so, tonight, we are going to engage and have a frank discussion about the dangers of underage drinking. And to the young people in our audience tonight, you know, this message is really important for you, not only for you, but also for your parents. And when it's all said and done, you've got a choice. You probably have heard this before, but with every choice, there's a consequence. And in this particular instance, the ultimate consequence may be your life. We know, at your age, there's a sense of invincibility. The thought, "That won't happen to me." Well, it can, and sadly, it has happened far too often. So finally, we are gathering here today in something that is very important, and something else I want to add, something the young people really need to know. And I think sometimes we take this for granted, adults in the room as well. And it's really very, very simple. We're here tonight for something that is so simple, you wake up every day and see it before your eyes, and that is love. Love. And whether you realize it or not, there is love in this room. The love, the care, the concern of not only our community leaders, our law enforcement agencies, and Wichita Police Department, and many others, because they care. There's love, there's genuine concern, hope, belief, trust, and the commitment that as often as we can, we must and we will do all that we can to save a life and make a difference. And so, in doing so, it is our deep belief that we will make a change. And so, I'm honored to present to the podium my co-host for the evening with Mirror Incorporated, Jason Verbekmos. Jason?
Well, tonight, what we're going to attempt to do is have a conversation about the issue that the hitman has put out in front of us. And so, in order to do that, we're going to begin with a video, and this video is called "This Place." It was put out by the FACE Corporation, which is a national nonprofit, looking at the prevention of underage drinking across the nation. And they've put together this video, it's kind of a different take on the issue, and it comes from a basis of prevention. And prevention to us means thinking a little bit differently about the issue of underage drinking and other drug use, in that we can begin to prevent these things by attaching ourselves and bonding to the community. And so, if we can get out and form some bonds and some social interactions, we have so much better chance of preventing this issue from ever happening. And so, we will just get right into the video and show you this. And again, this comes from "This Place."
This is where we are. A place where parents provide beer to 17-year-olds.
Your second question, once you've explained the first...
Where ninth graders drink rum from Coke bottles during school.
Once again, you're going to look at the four...
And kids take their first drink as young as nine or 10. A place where alcohol tastes like lemonade. And doing 12 to 15 shots a night is commonplace. When did kids start drinking so aggressively? Where the aim is not to drink, but to get drunk.
College campus erupts in violence. Much of what happened was fueled by alcohol.
Twenty students arrested Friday night, they were part of a mob.
How do we land here? In this place? How did it get so far away from how you and I remember it? Part of the answer is right outside our door. In an environment that has shifted dramatically over the years. Alcohol seems to be nearly everywhere. Gas stations that once sold only fuel and soda have turned into mini-marts, selling everything from milk and bread to AlcoPops and beer. Local festivals where the focus was on food and family fun have turned to beer tents and alcohol sponsorship. Even parking lots have turned away from their mundane use and are now playing fields for relentless partying. Look around, pay attention to the environments where drinking takes place, and the circumstances where we, the adults, do the drinking. This user-friendly environment that has been created around alcohol may have crept up on us as adults, but to our children and grandchildren, it is simply here. It is not just the environment that has changed over the years. There are disturbing trends in who is drinking. Young women rival their male counterparts in quantity and frequency. And both are starting to drink younger. Many are not even teenagers yet, they're children, starting as young as sixth grade.
My name is Jack.
I'm Olivia.
I'm Trenton, and I'm 12 years old.
And I'm 12 years old, 14 years old.
I was nine when I first had my first drink, and it was one of my dad's beers.
People and, um, my friend's dad always...
I hung out with my older sister and her friends.
First time I had...
The first time I drank, I just got dizzy and nauseous, and I puked.
When you're drinking, there's like no limit to what you do, you can have some...
We had a contest to see who could drink the most without getting sick, and...
We drank stuff that tasted sweet.
One of my friends got really sick and passed out.
Drinking and going to the park was one of our favorite places to drink.
Just sometimes I'm bored, or I have nothing else to do, and...
Because I thought it was the cool thing to do, you know, my friends were doing it, they were cool.
My mom just thought that I had the flu, that's what I told her. I don't think my parents ever knew, because I'd always just stay over at friends' houses.
My parents never even knew.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning, good to see all of you today. Our assignment for today is on the board...
The impact of starting this young takes a toll on developing brains, where learning and memory are at their peak. Alcohol impairs the part of the brain that takes new memories and locks them into long-term It damages the frontal lobe of the brain, the area that undergoes the most change during adolescence.
At school, everybody's...
And these children, who start to drink before age 15, are four times as likely to end up alcohol-dependent than if they had waited until the legal age of 21.
We started out with beers, and then moved up to liquor, like hard liquor, gin.
Usually, older guy standing outside, maybe a bum or something, and just give him a couple bucks, he'd head in there and get us whatever we asked for.
I'd start fights, when I'd get drunk, I'd get really mad over really dumb stuff.
And I don't remember what I was like, I would blackout and not remember the whole night.
You know, I was the life of the party, I'd meet a lot of guys, you know, it just...
And then the ambulances came, and the cops were called, and they ended up taking him to the hospital, and he died that night in the hospital.
One night, my mom found me passed out on the bathroom floor.
Get to know those guys, I'd be drunk, and, you know, they'd kind of take advantage of me.
I'm only 17, and I've been arrested like three times.
There's one consistent message heard from all youth who drink. In an environment that offers alcohol on nearly every corner, it is far too easy to get. An older friend, brother, or sister will buy. It gets pilfered from mom and dad's well-stocked refrigerator. And sometimes, even a parent will provide. Rationalizing that it is safer to buy and take the car keys. Our kids learn from the people and the environment around them. What they see and hear makes drinking seem casual, innocent, even expected. How can they know better, behave more responsibly, if their world tells them over and over, "It's okay, it's the way it's done"?
911, where's your emergency?
Did you get an ambulance? Uh, we got a guy who's passed out, he drank way too much, we found him this morning.
Okay.
A bunch of them were all drinking.
Okay, is he breathing?
I don't know, he's not waking up.
I do have some help on the way, okay?
Thank you.
How old do you think he is?
Uh, maybe 18, 19. Doesn't look like he's breathing very much at all. Doesn't look like it at all. He's waked up.
But, there is hope. There's a new story, being told in communities by people who looked at the landscape and said, "Enough, enough advertising to our youth, enough underage sales, enough alcohol stores on my block."
I think after a while, you know you have to do something.
And you just sit there and shake your head and think, "Yeah, you do, don't you? Let's do something, I'll help you."
It just takes someone to start.
Yeah, the police, I can think of a lot of things.
Unbelievable, in my 25 years of experience, I've never seen people grab onto something and then be able to move it forward from a grassroots level.
We walk around these problems on the sidewalk and in the doorways, shake our head and say, "Somebody's got to do something about that," that's baloney. Get mad, get off the couch.
We need to see drinking to get intoxicated, drinking fast and drinking hard, become something that's viewed as a vice, and socially unacceptable among young people, instead of something that's a challenge, or something that's fun, or something that's absolutely necessary to be accepted. I know that it can turn around, we have to keep at it, we have to keep working at it, and we can't give up our faith that we really can affect change.
The connection between youth and alcohol is everywhere in our community.
We're working with the council members, with politicians, so that they stop allowing more alcohol licenses coming into our city and access to alcohol for our youth.
Whoever you are, wherever you live, start changing things.
Okay, thank you all for paying attention to that, I think it tells a very nice message, it showcases that it really takes a community effort to begin to make a difference on this topic of underage drinking. It's a very unique and different circumstance, and it's really quite challenging to even begin to address these things, but if we do things in little, small chunks, then I believe that we can begin to make some sort of difference. What we're going to do now is invite our panel to join us up here at the front and make some opening remarks, and so I'll introduce them as we go here. So, we have Vice Mayor with us tonight, Janet Miller. We have Councilmember Levonta Williams joining us. Mayor Carl Brewer made the opening remarks for us tonight. We also have Officer Mike Lloyd from the Wichita Police Department, and Stephanie Quick joining us from the Wichita School District. And then we have Lauren Appenfeller, who is joining us from the Mayor's Youth Council. So, thank you all for joining us tonight. Do you want to move forward here and join us at the panel table? So, our game plan here is to give each one of these panelists just a few minutes to address the issue from their perspective, how they might view the issue, and some important information that they might have been able to pull prior to joining us. And then at the end, we'll hold all of our questions until they've made their opening remarks, and then we'll be able to take some questions from the audience if there are any questions. So, with that, if our panel would introduce themselves and give a little bit of background as to why you might be involved in this issue, or some perspective to how you come to experience a little bit of this issue, and then just some thoughts around how the issue has kind of unfolded.
Do you want us all to introduce ourselves first and then come back?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Let's do that, introduce yourselves first.
I'm Janet Miller, District 6 Council Representative and Vice Mayor, and I have been involved in one of the programs that is funded through some liquor tax funding that I'll tell you about here in a few minutes, called Safe Streets, that has kind of brought the issue to the forefront for me, so I think that's why I'm here this evening.
I'm Levonta Williams, and I'm a city council member representing District 1, which is 53rd Street North, all the way down to Mount Vernon. Why am I interested in this topic? Because I gave 35 years of my life to middle school, and so it was always something that I wanted to prevent, even in my teaching. And so, this is very important, that students and youth understand the consequences that can happen, and so, until I leave here, I will continue to help youth understand that this is a problem.
I'm Mike Lloyd, I'm a community policing officer out of the East Bureau. I'm also the program coordinator for what's known as the JUDGE Program, and it stands for Juvenile Underage Drinking Group Education Enforcement. I've been involved with that since the inception of it in 97. The issue on underage drinking to me is not only a work-related matter, but it's also a personal matter. Unfortunately, in my time in the Marine Corps, I lost a couple of Marines to underage drinking and some very poor decisions, and nothing is worse than having to make that phone call and tell their parents that their sons won't be coming home. So, I've been doing this for a lot of years, and, you know, it's good to see the folks that have turned out for this tonight, and hopefully, we can get the message out there. And I plan on continuing to do this even well beyond when I retire.
I'm Stephanie Quick, and I'm a supervisor with the Safety Services Department, Wichita Public Schools. And my role within the district is prevention and intervention education related to alcohol, underage alcohol use and drug abuse. And my background is also in teaching, so this just really hits home for me, much as Ms. Williams said and Mr. Lloyd said, because the impact that I've seen it have on our It's just a subject that's very near and dear, and one that definitely needs to be addressed.
I'm Lauren Appenfeller, I'm on the Mayor's Youth Council. My first year on the council, I was on the Prevention and Education Committee, and these past two years, I've been the chair of that committee, and it's because prevention is something that, to me, is really important, and that I think as a community, we need to address it better. And so, I was asked to be on the panel, because I offer a different perspective, because I am still a teenager, so I think it's important to incorporate different perspectives when trying to address the issues of preventing underage drinking.
Thank you all. Would you take a few minutes now and address this from your perspective, just go a little bit deeper and give us some more insight as to why you might be represented here on this panel?
Sure. Well, first, before I make some comments, I do want to recognize the members of the Mayor's Youth Council, Lauren and your colleagues for all being here, for participating in the Mayor's Youth Council. It's an important activity, and we're very glad that you're a part of it. And we do really appreciate the fact that you've taken on this particular issue to bring up in a Town Hall Meeting and to bring this issue to the forefront. There's nothing like youth talking to other youth to make a difference, and we appreciate that. What I thought I'd do is just spend a couple of minutes describing to you some of the activities that the City of Wichita undertakes with regard to prevention, and primarily, our role in that is providing some rather limited, unfortunately, funding toward prevention activities. We, as a city of Wichita, are not necessarily experts in this area, and so what we do is to utilize funding that comes to us, that's collected at the state level, from liquor sales, alcohol sales are taxed, and some of that funding is returned to the City of Wichita and other municipalities across the state. And Wichita...
And it's a program that's offered to middle school students. And a lot of prevention activities, in my personal opinion, and I think data supports, that the earlier we can begin prevention work, the better off we are. By the time youth get to be your age, you've already made your decisions about whether you're going to be underage drinkers or not. And it's very hard for anyone in the community to influence what you're going to do. Now, that's not universally true. Somebody here this evening, or somebody your age, may make a decision based on something they hear tonight or change their behavior, but it's pretty late in the game. And so, as Councilmember Williams alluded to, the work at the middle school age is really, and even before, is where we start to lay the groundwork for helping human beings make better decisions and understanding consequences of certain activities. And Youth Core focuses on exactly that, helping promote better thinking, clearer thinking, better decision-making, so that young people can understand positive choices, understanding what dangers are out there, and helping getting them connected to the community. As you heard in the video, that sense of connectedness, that sense of contributing to community, being a part of something, is an important part of prevention. And that's what Safe Streets and the Youth Core program focuses on. And presently, Youth Core is working at a number of middle schools here in town, Marshall, Horace Mann, Holy Savior, Gordon Parks, and St. Pat's. And we're collecting data on that and should have results of that over the next few months and years. So, we're very glad to participate in this work. Some of us, I think Councilmember Williams and I, wish we had more money to put toward this because we feel like it's very important in our community.
Thank you. And I'll take the next segment of that. And I as well want to thank all of you for being out this evening to discuss the underage drinking problems that we have. Additionally, I would like to thank the Mayor's Youth Council for bringing this to our awareness. And to Lauren, I do want to thank you also from the Mayor's Youth Council for being on the panel and for helping us to discuss it. I know that this takes a lot of courage to address this issue, and I also know that there are a host of other things that you could be doing this evening, other than being here. But I so appreciate you coming out this evening to help us to talk about the situation and for us to come to some understanding and maybe even think of some next steps that we could go through. We know that underage drinking disrupts and just disreils our lives. And underage drinking is known to occur in youth as young as 10-years-old. So, when I first began to teach, I thought, "I want to teach middle school," because that's where they begin to make those decisions. But 10-years-old is beyond middle school. That is elementary school. But middle school, for me, was a place to help and to start. This is very troubling when you think of a 10-year-old, as the young man on the movie or in the video just told us. It's very troubling that not only does this disrupt the ongoing development of a young person's mind, but in addition, those who start drinking early are four or five times more likely to develop an alcohol dependency. Underage drinking tends to lead to unprotected sex, which can then lead to HIV or AIDS. And so, that ball just keeps going and it keeps going, as the young lady said, who drank too much and then felt as if she was being taken advantage of. Additionally, alcohol use is a cause for concern among our youth as it is a gateway drug, or it's a playful drug, which leads to other risky behaviors such as more dangerous drugs, like marijuana, cocaine, meth, and other illegal drugs, as well as abuse of prescription drugs such as OxyContin. And over 25% of teen suicides are linked to underage drinking. There are close to 5,000 youth who lose their lives every year due to underage drinking. And almost one-third of those are due to fatal traffic accidents. As the young lady from Hays that we just talked about, no, she wasn't in an accident, but she was not coherent enough to understand where she was going or what she was doing. A recent study for Monitoring the Future discovered that 75% of underage drinking occurs outside of the home while youth are still in high school. And when it comes to those in senior year of high school, over 40% have had alcohol within the last month. As I was teaching middle school, I can remember teaching the health aspect of health recreation and physical education. You'd be surprised at how many youth told me they drink within their homes, because they even drink with their parents, or they shared substance abuse with their parents. And to speak with the youth, this was nothing uncommon for them. And so, as a teacher, we also looked at it as an opportunity to have that dialogue with students. And so, we would try to instill our values in students as we went along. I too have been involved in many occasions where we have tried preventive programs. I am very proud to say that for over 20 years, middle schools have been able to be involved in after-school programs in Wichita and in Andover. For those 20 years, we tried to make sure that we were surrounding those youth with people who cared. We tried to make sure that they had an understanding of what alcohol and substance abuse could do. I didn't realize that we had been involved for over 20 years, because Stephanie and I taught at the same middle school for a while. So, for 20 years, we have been trying to keep our young people on the right track. As was said, in many times, in many cases, you don't think that you have a preventive activity that's going on, but there are so many preventive activities that go on. I can think of real men, real heroes, who goes out and they mentor young men and young people every day. That is another preventive method. So, many of the things that you do on a daily basis could be considered preventive. Mayor's Youth Council, I consider to be a preventive activity, because you go back and you talk to other students of your age. And coming from you, that means so much more than it does coming from us. Our parents are also so involved in how we think and what we do. Our parents have to realize that we can give encouraging remarks and we can inform without being demanding. It's when we begin to demand too hard and too much that we sometimes lose our youth. And parents, we need to make sure that we know the facts. We need to make sure that we know what's coming up. We need to be aware of what our students are doing. We need to be informed as well, ourselves. And then, we need to make sure that we're setting boundaries and that we, as parents, have consequences for abuse of those boundaries, without going back on what we're trying to do. Teens also that start smoking early are likely to be addicted to tobacco before they are 18, because that's always been an issue for me as well. I used to teach the dangers of that. The longer we can prevent adolescents from using alcohol or any other drugs, the less likely they are to become addicted or ever abuse those substances. When I first came to City Hall and I found, well, Environmental Court, we have some students that are being prosecuted because they've allowed others to buy alcohol for them, or they've allowed others to buy cigarettes for them. And I thought, wow, we still have a lot of work to do. And I think we need to continue, continue to look for the resources in order to keep these preventive programs going. I think our youth are our future, and that's where money needs to go. Thank you so much for being here and sharing.
Like I stated earlier, I'm the Program Coordinator for our JUDGE program. And there's two key elements to it, the education and the enforcement. And I'll be honest with you, when I started in 97, I was one of the enforcement guys. And rather quickly, I found out that I was going to be doing a lot of the presentations and learning a lot about underage drinking and drug abuse. And I kind of got thrown into the fire and actually really enjoyed what I was learning and learned to work with the youth. Some of the things that I've seen in my time, especially doing the education, is not so much the lack of education of our youth, but of our parents. A lot of them take the approach that I did it when I was a kid. Well, times are different. Now, when we have problems, we're at an underage drinking party, somebody's more likely to pull out a weapon and use it versus going outside and throwing a few punches with their friend, coming back in and having a beer. And that's realistically how it worked years ago, back when I was younger. You'd get mad at your friend, it'd be done, be over, you'd go have another beer. Not saying that's right, because believe me, it wasn't. If we knew then what we know now, we wouldn't have been doing it to begin with. But our parents and a lot of our community members seem to think it's okay because I did it when I was a kid. Times have changed. The social norm isn't that anymore. We have lost way too many young adults and youth to underage drinking. The Wichita Police Department has actually suffered a loss of an officer due to an underage drunk driver. I was very young in my career when that happened, and unfortunately, she was on her way home and she was hit by an individual who was 20-years-of-age and killed her. And that's a big loss for us as a family. Her parents also used to be very active with the JUDGE program and some other activities here within the city as well, and still help out where they can, trying to get the message out there. A lot of what I see now, when we go to a party, we get there, and of course, I'll be honest with you, turning the lights off and telling everybody to be quiet doesn't work. We're already there. People try that, or somebody will come to the door, "Oh, nope, nobody's in here." My first question is, "So you mean the mound of beer cans behind you, you drank entirely by yourself?" And they kind of look at me surprised, because that's when I'm offering an ambulance to them. The disturbing part is when I get there and it's the parent that answers the door and then doesn't understand why I'm there, because, "Well, we took the car keys." Great, I know they're not driving, doesn't mean it's still right. We've spent a lot of time trying to educate them, trying to get them to change their thinking. And unfortunately, it's going to take even longer. That's where our youth really come into this. And those of you that care and want to make a difference, you're trying, you're here for these events. You're the ones that can talk to the adults and give a different perspective. Because again, they don't want to hear it from me, they don't want to hear it from the City Councilmembers, they might want to hear it from you. On our enforcement side of activities, we go out quite a bit and do compliance checks and what's referred to as party patrols. Where my whole purpose of being out there that night is looking for an underage party. And believe me, it's not that hard, any given day of the week, to go out and find one. When we do our compliance checks, we work with Alcohol Beverage Control, who's been a big partner with us, and along with the Stand Together Coalition. And it's not that we're trying to set up any liquor store to fail, because to be honest, a good night is we go out, we check 100 stores, and I write no cases whatsoever. That means they're doing their job. But it's going to happen. We don't give kids fake IDs, we don't tell them to lie. It's very straightforward, what they're supposed to do. Unfortunately, a lot of clerks don't pay attention and they sell. Several of the cases from last spring that I remember, when I asked them, "Did you ask for an ID?" "No, they looked old enough." We happen to use people that look like they're about 12-years-of-age, I mean, just to be realistic with you. And they still haven't made that connection. The famous one is, they'll get the ID, they'll put their finger right across that born-on-date, and they go, "Yep, good enough." And they don't understand why they're getting a visit from us. Again, it's not that we're out trying to make money for the city, because that's not our goal. I'd rather go out, do 100 of these and write zero cases, and report back to the state and the city that we had a very successful evening. Alcohol Beverage Control has been a big part of our JUDGE program and the Stand Together Coalition. They are also very willing to go out and help do the education. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here this evening to join us for this, but they're available. We have three local agents that are more than willing to help. We do go into schools, churches, community events. I can tell you, I've been a number of different places discussing the topic of underage drinking, and I always get several good questions out of it. And I'm very thankful to be a part of it and hopefully make a change.
In the schools, the impact of underage drinking can be very obvious, from poor attendance to disruption in the classroom, the academic scores being affected. But more importantly, we see the peer relations and the relationships with parents being And then, the damage or the potential damage to the brain development. So, we know it's a very serious issue. There's a couple of different approaches that we take. One is the prevention efforts, which starts very young. We recognize that, as Levonta said, middle school is almost too late. We really need to be talking to our elementary school kids. And so, we do a lot of life skills training then, talking about decision-making and how to make positive decisions, how to make healthy decisions, how to deal with peer pressure, how to deal with conflict, conflict resolution skills, working on problem-solving. Then, as students do get older, we focus more on just exactly what the group of students here are. Those peer leaders, student leadership groups that can spread the message, that can share information with their peers. The other approach that we take in the district is that parent education, providing parents with education, letting them know that communication is so important, making sure that they are available to listen to their kids, but also sharing some tips on what they can tell their kids. And then, the final part of it is teacher education. Lots of times, our teachers, while they care very much about our students, they don't always recognize the signs and symptoms of drug use or alcohol use. And so, we spend a lot of time training our teachers to recognize what those signs and symptoms are, so that if they do have a student who might be under the influence or who might be having problems, we can get them referred to the proper resources so that they can get some assistance in dealing with those issues.
So, a lot of people have been talking about incorporating different perspectives. And I guess I'm just here to kind of offer a teen's look on things. I know an important thing about being on the Mayor's Youth Council and actually being a teenager, trying to...
We have three local agents that will, are more than willing to help. We do go into schools, churches, community events. I can tell you, I've been a number of different places discussing the, the topic of underage drinking and I always get several good questions out of it. And I'm very thankful to be a part of it and hopefully make a change.
In the schools, the impact of underage drinking can be very obvious, from poor attendance to disruption in the classroom, the academic scores being affected. But more importantly, we see the peer relations and, and the relationships with parents being And then the damage or, or the potential damage to the brain development. So, we know it's a very serious issue. There's a couple of different approaches that we take. One is the prevention efforts, which starts very young. We recognize that, as Levanta said, middle school is almost too late. We really need to be talking to our elementary school kids. And so, we do a lot of life skills training then, talking about decision-making and how to make positive decisions, how to make healthy decisions, how to deal with peer pressure, how to deal with conflict, conflict resolution skills, working on problem solving. Then as students do get older, we focus more on just exactly what the group of students here are. Those peer leaders, student leadership groups that can spread the message, that can share information with their peers. The other approach that we take in the district is that parent education, providing parents with education, letting them know that communication is so important, making sure that, that, they are available to listen to their kids, but also sharing some tips on what they can tell their kids. And then the final part of it is teacher education. Lots of times our teachers, while they care very much about our students, they don't always recognize the signs and symptoms of drug use or, or alcohol use. And, and so, we spend a lot of time training our teachers to recognize what those signs and symptoms are so that if they do have a student who might be under the influence or who, who might be having problems, we can get them referred to the proper resources so that they can get some assistance in dealing with those issues.
So, a lot of people have been talking about like incorporating different perspectives. And I guess I'm just here to kind of offer a teen's look on things. I know an important thing about being on the Mayor's Youth Council and actually being a teenager, trying to spread the message of prevention, while we can do that from one to, one person to the other, it's also really important that our prevention methods as a whole, I think, be more positive. I know that there are a lot of things that, in statistics, that people try to do to scare students straight, such as talking about all the horrific car accidents and a lot of bad just statistics overall about the deaths every year. And I know on the slideshow, it was included how much it costs the US every year. I believe it was like sixty-four billion dollars. While it's good to like incorporate those things and talk about like why it's a bad idea to drink, I think it's also really important to incorporate the positive effects of not drinking and actually showing the results and statistics of how many people actually aren't drinking. This spring, and I was involved in Junior Jump Start, and I gave a presentation with Erin over there about prevention because that's something that I've been really involved in with the Mayor's Youth Council. And what we focused more on was less of why it's a bad idea to drink and more of how many people actually aren't doing it. Where we got our statistics from was the Communities That Care Survey. And that's a Sedgwick County base that actually has specifically just for Sedgwick County. All of the Wichita schools recently have participated in it. And so, it gives a pretty good gauge of actually how many students are engaging in these activities. And it's a really good survey because it has a lot of controls within it that actually allow it to be fairly accurate. It goes back to nineteen ninety-five, but in two thousand, there were thirty-nine percent of kids who had, had alcohol at some point in their lifetime, and that was from middle school to high school. Four years after that, it dropped down to thirty percent. In two thousand nine, it was only twenty-four percent of students had actually had alcohol, any sort of alcoholic beverage in their lifetime, and that was middle school and high school still. And just last year, the number actually dropped down to twenty-two percent. So, we can see that over the past decade and even before that, the trends have actually been going down on the amount of students that have had alcohol in their lifetime. And that means that eighty-eight percent of students in our area, Wichita, have actually not had any sort of alcoholic beverage in their lifetime. And those are really powerful statistics because I think a lot of the reason that kids drink is because they think that they're being pressured into it. And I know a lot of that was covered in the video that we watched before this. And so, it's interesting to see that most of the kids around you actually aren't doing that. And I think that makes it a lot easier to, when you're in a situation where you're being pressured into whether or not you need to make the choice to either not drink or if you're going to, it makes it a lot easier to decline alcohol if you know that a majority of kids aren't doing it. And so, I think that all of the parents that are here need to actually focus on the more positive messages that can be sent to students. While there can be also still a lot of good results from the, trying to scare students with bad statistics, these should also be incorporated, that a majority of their peers are not involved in these harmful activities. And so, I think that's something that should also be focused on.
It's all good stuff. Our panelists have shared with us a, a lot of information, a lot of statistics. Mike, you've been on the air with me before to, to talk about some of the stuff. I've actually been to your beat on some things that you've been working on. Kind of tell everybody and some of the young people, because I know you talk about these teen parties, but if you show up to a teen party and there's drinking going on and it's underage drinking, what are some of the potential risk factors that they're looking at dealing with and cost for parents if their kid is arrested and taken to, to jail?
Well, on the cost alone, if, if for a minor possession or a minor consumption, it's usually about a five hundred dollar fine. It's a misdemeanor crime. One of the, the biggest aspects that they added to this a few years back was the suspension of the driver's license. Now, I don't, don't know how many kids, you know, or teens have a driver's license and really want to go in and hand it to a judge for the first time offense, which is only thirty days. But it just progressively goes up there because the next time's sixty, the next time's ninety. After that, you won't see it again until you're eighteen. Now, that alone right there and your cost, just your cost, court costs, you're still looking, what, five to seven hundred dollars depending on the court fees. And then if you hire an attorney, that is going to run anywhere and, when, when I say you, I actually am referring to your parents. It's going to run them anywhere, you know, on the low end, three thousand dollars, on the high end, fifteen, you know, fifteen thousand, depending on what type of case. Because not only do you have the minor possession, minor consumption, but you also have state law on social hosting, which is, is kind of a big topic and a lot of cities have actually been doing some stuff. And I think we talked about that last year, Greg. You know, social hosting is a whole nother thing because it's not just, okay, we're having a party and she's underage and I'm not and I get arrested for it. It's, we're all having a party and I get arrested for social hosting, that's a count for every person. So now, I'm looking at a charge for every person that's under the age of twenty-one that's there. And that's going to end up costing me several thousand dollars if we go to court and I get found guilty of it. Parents, you know, not only do you have the cost of the, the fines, the court costs, but most of the time, a judge will order some type of treatment program, which comes out of your own pocket. I believe that's roughly three hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars a pop for, depending on where you go. And then there are usually, if there's a DUI involved in it, there's DUI classes and victims panels that you have to go to and you have to pay to go to each one of these. It's not one flat fee for it. So you can roughly run up, you know, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for one incident, just depending on the type of incident that's occurred.
It's good stuff for parents to know. Our school district representative, I'm amazed, and I presented this question on the air, at the attitude of parents who say, well, they're at home, they're drinking, at least I know where they're at, so as long as I know where they're at and they're home drinking, then it's okay. How do you manage that in a, in a public school environment? Because you're the one that has to deal with the problem after they get to school.
Well, and, and that's what we talk to them about, is the, the effects that allowing them to do it at home has, the impact that it has on, on their academics, on their school life. If, if they are caught at school, there's going to be a suspension, they're going to have to go get an assessment. And, and really, the first time that a student's caught at school under the influence or in possession, we deal with it as a health issue because, because really it is and we want them to get some assistance. And so, we're going to refer them to a place where they can get an assessment to determine specifically what type of assistance that they need. And, and we really talk with the parents about, to try and educate them, that, that this can be a lifelong problem, so it's something that needs to be addressed while they're young, rather than wait until it gets out of control. And then there's just the safety issue, talking to them about the risks that, that are involved, the damage that they can be causing to their brains, which aren't developed yet. The, as has already been mentioned, the risky decision-making, unprotected sex or just having sex in general, the driving, whether they have a license or not, but getting in the cars. So, really talking about all those different aspects.
It's good stuff to know. We want to open up questions to the audience. If you have a question for our panelist, just raise your hand and Jason or I will bring you to the microphone, uh, bring a microphone to you if you have a question. Don't be shy, these guys love questions, by the way. They, they ask questions to the media all the time, right?
Who wants to ask the first question?
Oh, yeah. That's our favorite line.
I'm not on the panel.
That's our favorite line.
Okay, I know you work at Power ninety-three point nine, so I've listened to the channel a few times and I know some of the songs that you play on there. It seems that what you are involved with in your community, it seems to send a completely different message from what the songs and what the songs revolve around send. Because I know when a lot of teens in high school listen to the cool people who are very nonchalant about life, who drunk, drank, smoked and have sex, and then to see your face and what you do, saying, no, this is bad, you shouldn't do that, how do you, I guess, how do you separate the line? How do you say, this is what we play on our radio and this is what we publicize, but it's not something that you should engage in?
You know, and, and it's, it's, it's a tricky line, you know, because, you know, I'm, I'm a Christian guy, go to church and, and preach these things to my kids at home. But the reality is, this is where music is at, whether you're country or rock or blues, it's all drinking and my baby's gone. And, and it has been for time. Does it make it right? No. We're in a position where we're the number one station in the market and because we're playing the music that is, A, research that people buy and it's the big consumer demand. And also being responsible programmers. And as program director of the radio station, I'm responsible for the content. So, I don't always take a song that I get from a record company that says, oh, this is the radio edit, it's safe to play. Because I will listen to it and I will hear certain words and go, uh-uh, no. And we'll flip it, we'll reverse it, there'll be times you listen, I know you can listen to Power Night three point nine and you hear songs that if you've heard the unedited album version, you hear it on our radio, or you hear words like, which I won't say in this particular form, that may be socially acceptable, that as responsible broadcasters, I say, oh, we can't do that. So I recognize that there is a demand by young people that want to hear the type of music that we play on our radio station, but I also realize that we have a public responsibility to do as much as we can to be as responsible as we can to the citizens of our community. Because at the end of the day, as broadcasters and public broadcasters, you're inviting us into your space. And we're like invited guests to your home and as such, we should conduct ourselves accordingly. And you have made the choice to invite us to your space. And so, that's why it's so important that not only that we're playing music that you like, but we go above and beyond by getting involved in, in the community, by, by going out and speaking to young people. Because I believe it does go a long way for me to stand up and as I've said on the air many times, hey, this is wrong. Don't drink, don't drive, don't smoke weed, don't do these things. And because the reality of it is, at the end of the day, like she touched on, eighty-eight percent of kids out there aren't drinking and most of you are getting it. And at the end of the day, the fight that we're having is for that remaining twenty-two percent and to keep that number going south. So, it, it's, it's a tough road, but I mean, that's where it's at. And obviously, eighty-plus thousand people in our community who make our station the top-rated station in the market, listen to our brand every day. And so, it's not only playing the music, but also being responsible broadcasters and being involved in the community by, by making it more, if we only made it about the music, then that's what it would be. But it's not all about the music. It's a great question. Thank you.
This question isn't for you. No, it's not for you. This question is for the panel. I know that you all had mentioned that there was somewhat of a limited supply of funding that was going to be available for the programs. And I know that there are different outlets and things that are out there for the youth, such as, you know, the YMCA and real teens, real heroes being involved as far as mentorships and things of that nature. With the, with the funding that is going to be available to you all for the program, and maybe you answered it earlier in your, in your presentations, but has the city put together any kind of a base plan or format as to what types of programs they may be able to direct those funds to? That would be somewhat of another outlet for, for these kids as, as a kind of an indirect distraction, if you will, to try to keep them away from underage drinking? Another outlet, another facility, entertainment facility or anything like that, that we may be able to tie into the YMCA or, or something like that?
I did have a conversation with Mary Kay Vaughn, who is someone who's over our CSBG and our CDBG funds, which are federal funds that come to us. Those are dwindling every year. Every year, those go down. I, I was very proud today to hear that for twenty years, the city has invested in the after-school program. And that has been with ninety thousand to a hundred thousand per year that they invest. And then the YMCA does invest some additionally, and so does the school district. So you have three entities there that are investing in our youth with the YMCA, the city and USD two-five-nine, all trying to make sure that students have something to do, someplace to be, after school, in middle school, get their homework done. Job prep is another program and also the, the city job situation. I would love to find an additional one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars to put into job prep and to put into the city program as well. Because in those programs, and that just started last year, so that's a new program, not job prep, but the city program that we have, that is a new program. But that is teaching our, our young people responsibility, it's teaching them interview skills, it's teaching them Red Cross skills. It teaches them so much more than just going to work, it teaches them responsibility. And, and through some of those things, I think, without knowing it, they are learning preventive skills as they go along from someone else other than parents. I think a lot of times, parents, we have other people speaking to our kids and we hope that we are surrounding our kids with positive people that also encourage the same things that we encourage. So, we, we would hope that additional funding would be coming down the pike, but according to all of the messages that we are receiving, the funds are going to dwindle again. But we are hoping that we can at least maintain the programs that we have because as the vice mayor mentioned, we do invest in, in using some of the special, special liquor tax funding to keep things like the Safe Streets going, to invest in cities and schools. We used to work with that when we were in middle school, communities and schools, RCIS, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So, we've got to try to maintain all of the programs that we have and then add additional as they come down the pike. Real Men, Real Heroes is another indication of a program that was started. How long has it been going now? Maybe five to six years? But that's a program that was started with a grant, but it has been able to sustain itself. And then it even evolved into the Teen Heroes. So, I think we keep looking at those different programs and keep hoping for additional funding, but at least trying to maintain what we have. Vice Mayor, your thoughts?
While we would love to be able to do that, our main goal right now is trying to hang on to the funding that we have. Councilmember Williams referenced the CSBG and CDBG dollars. We've been told to brace for a fifty percent cut in those funds. And the state, over the past few years, has taken or held back funding that used to come to communities. And I, I hate to even say this out loud, kind of, but the liquor tax is one of the few that still comes back to the city and we worry every year that it's going to be dipped into or cut or withheld entirely, in which it will take the entire budget. So, our efforts are really focused on how to spend the money that we have, how to maintain what we have and try to keep those dollars from coming here. It's a splendid idea though, and certainly would be wonderful if we could pursue that kind of facility.
The National League of Cities is one of the events that, that I make it to every year and sit on committees, even on the national level. As they know, I, I wasn't able to be available much on the last one because of committee opportunities and, and obligations. But one of the committees that I do sit on is a committee that is really watching the CDBG dollars, which is the community of block development funding. And so, we watch those dollars and we advocate for those dollars. And so, when the message comes out that it's time to email and talk to your congressman, we also do that once a year by going to Washington and talking to our congressman and talking to our leaders there and letting them know what's so important in Wichita and how, how important these funds are. I just, I, I have a problem cutting money when And so when the message comes out that it's time to email and talk to your congressman, we also do that once a year by going to Washington and talking to our congressmen, and talking to our leaders there, and letting them know what's so important in Wichita, and how important these funds are. I just, I have a problem cutting money when it pertains to our youth. And so I think that those are dollars that are well-spent with the Mayor's Youth Council. If we didn't have that support, even from some of the community organizations, that would be a threat. But I think that we know how valuable the Mayor's Youth Council is. When I first came to council, and I went to the National League of Cities, I came back and I said, why does everybody else have youth attend, and we don't? And so the mayor came back then and made sure that the next year, that we had a group of youth that were going to learn what government was all about, and then to come back and advocate. And I'm so, I'm so very proud to see our Youth Council advocating to bring awareness to the problem that we have of underage drinking. So I applaud this group for doing what they're doing, but we'll keep fighting for the dollars. Any youth questions? Okay, let's go.
Okay, to go off what Lauren said, I like the positive stance. We, as youth, always hear, it's grounded into our mind about all the bad aspects of everything, and it's a nice turn of events when you hear positive things, and I like that stance about everything. We, as the Mayor's Youth Council, strive to make a better difference for youth in our community, and I'm just wondering if you guys have any ideas of how we can better that for the youth, and give the youth a more opportunity to make a difference?
I think what you're doing right now is very important. I, too, like Lauren's message an awful lot, and I hope that that's one of the messages that gets back to the media and then gets back out to the public. So I think what you're doing, and as you see what's going on in our community, if there's any way that as adults, we can be involved in something that you see, I think is the main goal, because we want to be available to help support the situations that you see within your community. So I think you're doing a great job.
And I just think the more that you can go back to your schools and talk with those student leadership groups, and bring them on board, share information with them, and try to energize and motivate, and get them to spread the word to their student bodies, just the more you can get the message out, the better.
I think one thing I would do is to challenge you to maybe go down to the middle school or go down to the elementary school, and let them see that positive image that you are. I think that says volumes as well. So it's kind of like give back.
Yeah, that's the part that I would add on to, is that if you can form a relationship with a younger student, or another kid in your neighborhood, or maybe it's even a younger sibling, you probably remember this from when you were younger, you look up to, you want to be like, you dress like, you act like, you, there are people that you just connect to that are older than you, and you idolize them. And we want middle school kids to idolize you, because you are the role model. And if you can connect with a younger student, a younger kid, you can make an enormous difference. You don't even necessarily have to, it's great if you want to talk about this subject, and you can talk about it, but you can make a big difference just by connecting and showing that kid, that younger student, what it's like to be a responsible person, you know, the things that you do, and they're going to look up to you. We want them to look up to you.
I think the things that I always found is that you can talk about things without talking about them. So even in the after-school program, we may do our nails, nail class, but as we're doing our nails, we're talking. We're talking about this, or we're talking about that, and we're in a relaxed atmosphere. So I think that there are many times that you can get your message across without just saying, don't drink. And I think you guys have a very positive image of doing that.
It's more of a comment or an observation more so than a question. I had an opportunity to meet with Mary Kay several months ago, and was aware of the funds being cut. And as I recall, there was a form of a survey that was put out, and there was supposed to get some community feedback as to which programs that they thought were the most important ones, or the ones they would like to keep. Has the results of that came back yet, or do we know what that is, and how that, or was anything having to do with the youth programs or anything like that?
I think that was part of the allocations process.
It was, and there was a committee that looked at that. They took all of the information back to decide the priority of spending. But to my knowledge, I'm not sure that that's been disclosed yet, has it? I haven't heard anything.
Well, it wasn't published as a survey results. In other words, she does have that data, but what happened, how it was used was, it was collected, and then it helped set the spending priorities, and how much money was allocated into each category, and we have been through that process, yes.
But when those opportunities occur, that's why we ask people to please help make decisions. And I tell young people, and I tell adults all the time, if you don't say something, then you can't be concerned about what the results are going to be. So I always tell young people, speak up, if you have something to say, let your voices be heard. And so thank you for that question. And we will double up and track back to see if the results are out on that, or if she had some.
I have a question for Lauren. First, I want to commend you and the other Mayor's Youth Council members for your working with the leadership from the city of Wichita. Our own state legislature started meeting yesterday. Does the Mayor's Youth Council have any plans to take any positions regarding any issues that may come before our legislature this year, such as the possibility of allowing liquor to be sold in convenience stores and grocery stores? That's just one that comes to my mind.
Yeah, I know that, I've been on the council for a couple of years, in my freshman year, we definitely were a lot more involved with legislation in Topeka, and actually being more involved in that process, and going, having to do with that. That didn't have to do with actual alcohol taxes, or what you were talking about. However, we do have a government and legislative affairs committee that I think, I don't believe that the chair of that has any ideas for that right now, but I think that we can, after this town hall meeting, go to the chair of that committee and get involved as a council in more events like that going on in our legislature.
I will say that you were very productive, what was it, two years ago?
Yeah, it was a plastic and recycle tax, yeah.
Tax and driving? Was that four years ago?
Time flies when you're having fun.
It does, doesn't it? Did I see Erin had a question?
Anyone else with a question?
I, you know, I just want to, to the young people in the audience, first of all, I commend you again for your leadership, and I encourage you to identify with an adult, a mentor, who you can talk to and engage with, and have conversations with, and talk to. And, you know, I was thinking about your question even more as I sat down. You know, the music may be what you like, but it doesn't define you. It's not who you are. And you have the intelligence and wherewithal and foresight to know the difference between right and wrong, and you can make a difference. There's some young people in this room I know that I've talked to and had conversations with, and make it a point to sit down and meet with them at any time, because that's what it's about for us adults, to have that open door. And it's for you to find out that, hey, it's okay to talk to us, we're not that uncool. But having said that, we have said a lot of things tonight that many of you are aware, a lot of things tonight that many of you have heard before, but it's important that they are said again, and again, and again. Because as we have seen, as you so pointed out so very well, we are making a difference. It's a long road, and we're not here just for tonight, and we're going to leave this place and go back to our homes, and, ah, that was a great discussion, and hang up our boots, and that's it. We continue. I was a part of the youth council when I was in high school, years ago, and we were having this discussion then. And we'll continue to have this discussion, because we're planting the seeds. The seeds have changed, and at some point in time, you pass it on. And that's what you're doing in a lot of ways. You'll pass it on. Through two years of experience on this council, and many of you, and the engagement that you're having, you will pass it on. And there'll be a young person in which you will have a chance to reach in and make a difference, and sometimes you'll make a difference and not even realize it. So let's go back and do the things that we have to do. We know what the numbers are, we know what the challenge is. Now, at the end of the day, what am I? What are you? And together collectively, what are we going to do about it? And I think right now shows exactly what we intend to do about it, by having action steps, and our leaders, our mayor, our vice mayor, our city council members. Mike Lloyd, this guy's incredible, by the way. He's just a heck of a guy, and he's really engaged and connected, and many of the police officers in our community are. I submit to you that they're good people, and they care. And the same way with your educators and teachers, who at times will tell you to do things that you don't want to do, and that's why you don't like them sometimes, but at the end of the day, there's a method to the madness. And the leadership from our school district, and the engagement that the educators, not only the Wichita Public Schools, but surrounding school districts, are having with young people, and that it's okay. So I've enjoyed this conversation tonight. I know I'm going to be talking about it tomorrow morning on the air, and I encourage you to continue to talk about it. And also, I was thinking, you know, as a young person, too, if you walk into a situation and you see underage drinking, what do you do? What happens? What do you say? How do you react? Things to think about. It's been a great discussion tonight, and I'm glad all of you came. We have some refreshments, some punch and cookies and water, is that right, Van and Lauren? We've got some refreshments? All right. Thank you for being here tonight. God bless. [applause][1794.33]